Welcome to the September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three Pharmacy School District Court of Education meeting. Please stand before the release.
I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please, Mr. Seale.
Mr. Roth.
Present.
Mr. Murra.
Present.
Mr. Schwart.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Dr. Smiley, can you please confirm this meeting is being livestreamed?
Yes, it is.
Can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting? If there's a problem, speak up immediately so that technical difficulty can't be at your loss.
Let's move on.
Thank you, sir. At this point, I would like to invite my friend, Mr. Hills, Mayor Tony Garcia, to say a few words for the five minutes. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President, for this opportunity to speak, and thank you for this five minutes. I want to start off, I want to congratulate, I hear there's a new rating out, congratulate all of you, our teachers and students and parents, we have a three-point-five-star rating from the state of Ohio. Next up, real quick, because I only got five minutes, I reiterate my support for those same teachers and children by supporting my unwavering support for renewal this fall, and we'll get to the operating levy in the next year or so, because that's how we fund curriculum and we pay our teachers. Okay. That said, tonight, we're going to have a presentation from the OSCC. The presentation is going to do a cost refurbish versus rebuild for the Parma High property. What you'll see in this presentation is that we've got, we're going to do a new building here proposed, evaluated for two thousand one hundred ninety-four students plus eight-hundred-six career tech, for a total of three thousand students. Okay? My understanding, current structure is four hundred twenty-two thousand square feet, approximately, and the analysis here today will be for four hundred ninety-nine, six-hundred sixty-five square feet. That's eighteen percent larger building than this today, so refurbishment is a little different scenario when you're increasing it, and the increase in size, if you remember, are after this eighteen percent. Additionally, there'll be a footnote that say, if we want to go down this path, that there could be a need for additional, one hundred and twenty-three thousand, one hundred twenty-two thousand square feet, which is an additional thirty percent increase to what the property originally was for. And that's fine, well, good, and it's evaluating one option. And what we'll see in this scenario where the square footage is significantly increased, that the refurbish versus rebuild is higher. So in that scenario, it absolutely makes sense to rebuild. However, one other thing I'd like to say there is this topic, that was conveyed to me as a response to my letter, then a special meeting after my letter, in the beginning reading, it was conveyed that that was a response to my letter, and a good portion of that was about reopening Parma High as a third high school. My letter was not about a third high school, didn't mention it at all. My letter was not about evaluating rebuild versus refurbish Parma High into a much larger facility, or probably the master plan from going from three-one high school. That letter, for the last time, was saying that we have new information, new information, you all agree, is new information. One of the, one of the three things in the letter, one of the three things was the waiver. The study that a lot of people put a hard work in, and I don't discredit that in any way, over the last six years, said all of our facilities need to be rebuilt. And without the passage of the bond, that can happen. So I'm saying, take this opportunity with this new information, and then reevaluate the master plan as a whole. Remember, about one building, can the waiver be used for a property like Earl Park? Can it be used for a property like John Muir? Can it be used for a property like Parma Park? When you start evaluating those questions, it could change your overall answer. The committee and all the residents that worked so hard to come up with a master plan did not have this information. I suspect any reasonable person would say that, here's our options. If we rebuild, we can get money from the state. If we do not rebuild, we will not get money from the state. The logical conclusion with that simple statement is, we must rebuild to get the money from the state. That option was not heard by that committee. So I'd like to focus on the renewals, the operating levy, and once again, ask to re-look at the master plan, stop the demolition if we can at this point. I know there's contracts out there that have been brought up that potentially arrows in emission, insurance can cover that seven-hundred-thousand, or whatever portion we'd be obligated to. It would also keep the central office here, maybe we can re-institute the thing, great things I heard about the ACIS facility in this facility, and so many other options. Last but not least, I want to reiterate, I think it's a good idea to get a professional appraisal for the property, it should be around ten thousand dollars, and that represents point zero-zero-zero-seven of our annual operating budget. A small price to pay to take that off the table. Thank you for this time.
Thank you. Dr. Smiley?
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor, for your comments. At this time, we would ask Mr. Prentissall to come to this podium. Mr. Prentissall is from the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, has worked with us, predates my time in the district, actually, he can tell you the specific year, but he's been involved for quite some time in Parma, and has a good amount of information to present tonight about the potential of renovation of Parma City High. Mr. Prentissall, thank you for coming up.
Thank you. So let me start off by sort of qualifying what the objective is, and Mayor did basically say that this was a response to his letter, and I think it's sort of, I look at it as it was a response to the questions revolving around the waiver. Because the question was, you know, did, did, did Parma ever look at a waiver? Did they know about a waiver? And so, we got to thinking about this internally, and said, you know, I know some of the responses have been, well, a waiver never made sense because of the cost. The problem is, you didn't have anything to show anybody to prove that, that statement, okay? That, so this is really what this study does. This study is for us, we said, okay, let's go back and do sort of a what-if. What if we were going to renovate the building and run the numbers? Because districts that normally would ask for a waiver, you know, need to see the numbers, right? Because it's like, it's like a car, when you decide that you're going to go out and buy a, a new car, or you're thinking about buying a new car, you're going to look at the cost to have your car repaired versus buying a new one. So this is essentially what this study was designed to do. So the first thing we did was to update the, the new high school, and these numbers match the numbers that were, are in the current agreement that we have, that were also in the literature that was around when the bond issue was. So you can see the top line is the new school and the total number of students that go in there, and it's roughly a half-million square feet, if you just round it up, so call it five-hundred-thousand, plus the number to abate and demo, and that number is different than what we had in our plan, because that's the actual contractual number. So we're using a real number rather than a budgeting number. And then, there's money that is shown for the optional LFI, which is what we call it, but it's the money that was budgeted to replace the auditorium and the auditorium with, with the new space. So if we're going to compare a new structure with existing, we have to have the same components in there. So that total budget is two-hundred, call it two-hundred-and-fourteen million. And then, if we just try to get what the state is going to co-fund, you subtract back out the twenty million to get the co-funded amount, and then the share, the state local share, which is the share that the, the district needs to put in versus what the state puts in, and you can see how the numbers run. But the key number here, if you just want to look at the, sort of the, you know, the total cost to the district upfront, it's two-hundred-and-fourteen million. So now, if we compare that to the cost to renovate, you can see the numbers there, the number to actually renovate, and it does require an addition, let me explain the reason why it puts an addition on it, because the existing building is approximately four-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand square feet, and you saw the new one is four-hundred-ninety, call it half-million, so in order to use the same square foot per student that we programmed for the building, then it would require an addition to house all of those students. So you can see that number at two-hundred-five, and of course, you're not in bait and demo, so that's not in there. And then, there's a number, a number in there to renovate the auditorium and the auditorium. The reason that's pulled out is because the state does not co-fund auditoriums and auditoriums. So we pull that out as an LFI, and you can see the total cost there is two-ten, okay? Which is a little bit less than the cost for a new one. But then, if you take into consideration the LFI's, the co-funded amount is, is less, it's one-hundred-and-eighty-four million. So that's, that's the number that the state is basing their percentage on. So the thirty-seven percent that the state would kick in is based on a smaller number. So if you just compare the two, you can see here at a glance that one-hundred-ninety versus two-hundred-five for the building itself, and then the budget that is co-funded is less. So, just quickly, some assumptions and notes, because obviously, this was a study, one of the things that, from reading the paper, that I have an opportunity to clarify, is that this is what we call an help project, which means, right now, the district is, has to pay for the whole thing upfront, the state doesn't put their money in until later, okay? It's called an expedited local partnership program, you can, if you're interested in researching, get on our website. So this allows the district to move forward under their own time, using their own money, with the idea that when the state is ready to co-fund, they will, they will refund the district for the amount of share that they would have put in. So, you know, there's no money from the state coming right now, okay? And again, this was, has already been stated, that this study is done simply to compare the master plan of a new versus renovation. It's not looking at the entire plan, it's looking at just this comparison. Some other ones here, I don't want to bore people, but I already mentioned the abate demo is the actual cost, that's based on the twenty-two cost set, which means, as time goes by, obviously, inflation, this twenty-two cost set is the same cost set that was in the agreement that we have with the district. The local share is based on the F twenty-two. Now, these, this slide is, is mostly to show you that even though we did the study, and it's showing that they're very close in cost, almost exact, the one thing about the renovation is, there's a lot of costs that we don't know about. Anybody who's renovated their own house knows that. You start tearing into it, I don't care how good of a planner you are, when you're tearing things apart, you're going to find things that are unexpected. It doesn't have those costs yet. So, and then there's other things like what we call enhancereprogramming, which is reconfiguring of the building, because these renovation costs that you see are for the infrastructure only. So when I say infrastructure, it's kind of the components that make the building a building, not make it a school, it's the common things, you know, it's roof, windows, heating, air conditioning, plumbing, it's that kind of stuff. But what it doesn't have in there is the improvements that you would want to do to the layout of the inside of the building. So if you're going to renovate and spend that kind of money on a building, you're going to want to update the inside of it, and as you know, the district has been meeting and looking at making significant changes in the way the curriculum operates, and so to have, to have the building respond to those changes would require walls to be moved around. Well, we don't even have those costs in there, so you can imagine, if we did that study, it's going to drive those renovation costs even higher. Let's see, and then we already talked about the risks, you know, the risks are definitely higher, so that, that also affects your contingency. So when we budget schools for new buildings, we have a smaller contingency than we do for renovation, and so ultimately, that ends up being partially paid for by the district. You know, the, the actual addition to the building is one-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-nine, and I think the mayor made a good point, is that this site, you know, trying to fit all that in there, if you were to just put an addition on the building the way it sits, the advantage of a new building is you can reconfigure it and make it more compact, it can have less footprint, which I believe, and I'm not real familiar with the studies that you're, that the architect did, but I know that they were very compact, and actually, so it actually takes up less footprint than your current building, even though it's bigger. And there's some self-care career tech in here. And then, you know, this last point, even if the two-thirds waiver is requested and granted, district should always be aware that costs that exceed the hundred percent cap. So what that means is, is that if, if the costs are real close, and if the district decides they want to renovate, once construction starts, and you start seeing potential change orders that start driving it up, which we all know is very likely, once you hit the equivalent of the replacement, which is the cost that you saw there, then the state no longer co-funds that. So you're sort of on your own, and you lose the state co-funding. So, you know, from our point of view, the cost difference between these two buildings is almost negligible. And if you look at the co-funded part, which is the part that the state is investing in, which is contributing to the overall budget, it's actually higher. And so, this renovation budget is based on best-case scenario, because again, I don't have any of those costs in there, like reprogramming, reconfiguration, and things like that. And in order to do that, would require, you know, a very intense, in-depth study. So that's, that's basically my presenting.
What is that? What is that noise? Do you, do you? So you're all good there, sir? Okay. So, no, sir.
No, it's not an open.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
It's okay. So, my question, I have a question about the waiver. Does a waiver offer money that we would not have to pay back, you know, stay like free?
Waiver has nothing to do with money. A waiver is, okay, so let me back up, so the, the rule of thumb that we created way back when the program started was that if the cost to renovate a building was two-thirds the cost to replace it, and I like to give the example, if, if the, if the cost to replace the building's ten million, and our renovation assessment says it's seven, then seven over ten, it's seventy percent. Our line in the sand is sixty-seven. What that means is, the state, by default, is saying to replace the building. However, districts can say, wait a minute, we don't want to do that, okay? We want to go for a waiver, just simply asking for a waiver, okay? And once they do that, and there is a process, you can get on our website, you can look at it, it's essentially, we begin to enter into dialogue, and we go into this in-depth study, okay, which takes quite a while to do. And it's basically, the purpose of the study is to dig deeper, because when you think about it, that sixty-seven percent is just based on sort of the raw assessment, right? It isn't based on, what are you going to do with the building? Are you going to change the grades or anything? It's a raw assessment. And it just says, the state is willing to give you a new building if you want it, but if you don't want it, all the district has to do is ask for a waiver, okay? That waiver, then, potentially allows them to renovate versus replace, but it has no effect on the share or anything. Now, the cost of, of the project is going to differ a little bit, right? Depending on how bad of a shape the building is, right? But once it hits that one-hundred percent cap, then the state is done putting money in, okay? But any, anybody can ask for waivers, they're very common. And I, you know, I was asked about high schools, you know, I would say half, I'm working on lots and lots of projects in northeast and Ohio, and I would say, you know, a lot of them ask for waivers, but also, a lot of them don't, and a lot of them end up doing new buildings. And quite frankly, we do a lot more new buildings than we do renovations.
Thank you. I'm not sure if this is better asked to you or to our friends from GPD, but part of, I think, what has started to evolve out of these conversations, I believe there's general acceptance that, you know, renovating the building makes no economic sense. I think that that has become a consensus?
Yeah, I believe.
Yeah, and, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, I'm just saying, from our perspective, it has. But one of the questions that has now come is, well, can you save a part of the building? Can you save the clock tower and build around that? And our answer to that has been, that in itself has significant expenses, A, to maintain the building as is for as long as potentially, you know, could be a decade before we're actually building anything new, but B, to then try to configure a building around that. Can you speak to that at all?
Absolutely, and we've done plenty of that, okay? But I will say, it's very, very tricky. It's very tricky. You know, examples, probably the most, probably well-known example in the area is, is Illyria's High School, so you're familiar, Illyria, I have a huge, huge high school, and it was basically this beautiful old, I mean, very beautiful, kind of thing you see on postcard, it is eighteen eighty-something, or maybe eighteen ninety, Romanesque-type building, almost looks like a castle. And then it had this giant nineteen-seventies addition that was put on it, okay? And what we did there is, we tore down everything but that jewel of architecture. But I will tell you, if you talk to the district, it cost a lot of money to do that because of the selective demolition, we had underground tunnels, I mean, it was really, really difficult. But in their case, they had decided they were willing to spend that extra money to do that. But from a financial standpoint, you know, it cost money. And we, and then there's lots of other ones where we tried that, and when we got done with the study, the district said, you know what, it's just not worth it. And when you look at the financial part of it, so...
And then Illyria's case, if I'm not mistaken, I mean, that, that was part of a building project, that wasn't, let's leave this part of a building for potentially ten to twelve years, because...
No, it was immediate, I mean, yeah, that, I mean, they went from tearing it down to building right onto it.
Correct.
I know, and then we have other ones, I had mentioned Euclid, you know, Euclid has kept pieces of it, but they were LFI pieces. And I think you hit on a key note, you got to be real careful, because if you keep a piece of the building, it's now going to dictate the layout of the building, okay? It's like a tail wag in the dark. So to keep a little piece of a giant building, that, and giant buildings configuration is now sort of married to this little piece. Sometimes it works, most of the time, it doesn't work. So yeah, I mean, it's, it's complicated, and it does require a lot of stuff.
Thank you.
Dr. Smiley? One good example that's pretty close, that a lot of people might identify with?
Clock Tower.
I said, one example that's pretty close, that a lot of people might identify with, is in Lakewood, one of their middle schools, they thought that the facade was very historic, and this is fifteen years ago, but they wanted to just keep their front facade and tear down all the back, and to do that fifteen years ago, just to save that front facade, we popped it up and held it in place, while everything else was torn down, was about eight-hundred grand.
By the way, people were upset last time that we didn't identify people, this is Mark, and Marcus from GPD, he's also worked with us for really the duration of the time we've been working on it. Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, and then one other example, Charlie, if you want to call somebody, is Warren City Schools, I think it's Warren Harding High School, they're the same thing that Mark, where they kept the front facade, they were sorry they did that. Not because it did turn out cool, it just cost a lot more money than they thought it would cost, because of all the unknowns.
Thank you.
Is there also an element too, when you cut an old part of a building, that old part doesn't get any younger, so then you've got that attached to a new building, but this part is still getting aged? And what kind, I mean, are there issues with that?
Well, we would, if it was in our program, it would have to come up to all of our standards, so you would have to invest significant money into it. And, and they did that in Illyria, for example, and it is really cool in there, you know? I mean, I, I mentioned also Cleveland, I've been working with Cleveland since two thousand and two. They, early on, they renovated John Hay, if you're familiar with John Hay over in University Circle, beautiful building. But it ended up costing more than a new building. Didn't start off that way, that comment about change orders, after that, they didn't do anymore. We did get resistance on some schools like John Marshall, but after the dust settled, they realized, we're going to do new, and they did end up doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have two quick questions.
Two, go ahead.
Yeah. For going forward, what's the percentage of waivers that are denied? Do they deny them?
No. We try, we've been asked that question, and we try to see if we can get that out of the database, and there's no easy way to do it, it has to be someone manually going through and looking at it, it's just the way it was set up. But I will tell you this, and let me tell you how waivers work. A district, I'll be, because planners like me are working with districts in the early time zone, and we're just having regular meetings, and as the idea comes up, you know, the planner from OSCC is going to dialogue with you and give you his opinion, like whether you, you think it's going to be a good idea. And, and then we base that on facts that we would share with you. And we normally don't take the waivers to the formal stage if we don't believe they're going to pass. So the answer to your question is, almost all the time, they, they pass, okay? And ultimately, you know, it's the district's decision whether they want to do it or not. What we're looking for is, when you're done spending all this money, is it going to be a good school? Because our mission is to build either new or renovated schools that meet certain quality standards in terms of the amenities, and, you know, the materials, and all that kind of stuff. So if what you're doing can accomplish that, we're going to approve it. But the problem is, it costs a lot of money, a lot of times, to accomplish that, because of the things like reconfiguration. So the answer, I mean, I'm not giving you an exact answer, but I would tell you, almost all the time, they, they get approved, they get approved.
Because once you explain what is involved and how much it's going to cost, then districts...
Yeah, I mean, this kind of thing, we didn't do this formally, right? But if I would have done that at some point in the past, I'm pretty sure folks wouldn't afford, unless there was some other significant thing, like landmarks or something's going to dish out a bunch of money to save, you know, the front part of the building or something like that.
And then my other quick, real quick question is, on your slides of the cost, on the LFI for the new, you had twenty million dollars for on the renovate, you had five, but then you took twenty-five million dollars out, what was that another twenty million for? You didn't explain that. No, that wasn't the original. It's the optional for the LFI, it's twenty million that we have to pay for, because that's not part of it.
Oh, the twenty, no.
And renovating was five, but you said less all LFI's, it was twenty-five.
You see that required LFI at the top? You'll notice that, that the other one...
Doesn't have it.
Doesn't have it. Okay, and here's the reason why, is because, and it would show up if I shared with you, which I'm happy to do if anybody wants them, is the detailed sheets to go behind this, okay? On renovations, there are certain things that the state won't, won't pay for. So, for example, the auditorium and the auditorium, the state's going to say there are certain things that you must do, which have mostly to do with code issues, okay? That are in the assessment, that are actually captured in the costs, so in our actual captured costs, and then they're pulled out, because those are spaces that we don't co-fund. So there are twenty, there's twenty million dollars scattered throughout the building of things that the state doesn't cover in that renovation, okay? And, and again, I could show you exactly what those are, if you're interested. So those are called required LFI's. That means that if you want this deal, the LFI is part of the deal. I call the other one optional, because you don't have to do that, it's your choice whether you want to spend more money, and that's, that's usually, that five million is for things that, that we don't really care about, because it's more like seating upgrades, it's, it's the looks of the building, if you want to improve, you know, the theatrical lighting and all the stage-type stuff, we don't pay that, pay for that.
They're going to make you, in those spaces, they're going to make you do life safety. So you're going to get a fire suppression system, you're going to get a fire alarm, you're going to get everything to bring it up to the same, same standard. you're going to get everything to bring it up to the same, same standard as what the rest of the building may be.
Thanks. I was just curious, because I didn't know what the...
Yeah, that's a good question.
Required LFI versus...
Yeah.
Anybody else? Okay. So I'd like to take this moment to thank you, Bill, for coming in, representing from the OCC, and sharing the information on waiver options. And it is evident that with this information presented about the waiver, it is not a financially prudent avenue for us to travel. And it's clear that new construction is a financially valuable action. Thank you for the work on the issue. I believe that just brings this issue to a close, and we can get back to work to move the district forward in educating the students of Parma City Schools. So thank you very much. And with that...
I have a few other comments.
We have a couple of comments.
First, if you came for the OCC presentation, and maybe I see out of a statement, now is a very socially appropriate time to leave. You're certainly welcome to stay, but there's nothing else relevant to those issues that we will be discussing tonight. We certainly appreciate the interest, we appreciate the support, really on both sides of the issue. We know that it became a very contentious issue in the community. We are glad that we have led this very completely at this point and are ready to move forward. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Really?
It wasn't to see you in a suit, sir. I'd like to touch on the report cards and report the... Do I need a towel or something? We took some...
Thank you. Take care of yourselves.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the comments.
Thank you. Oh, Sean. Sean.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to address the fact that we had our state report card come out today. I did send a letter to the community this evening, and certainly this is not an in-depth presentation, and we will have an in-depth presentation at the next meeting, which will be September 28th. But I did want to just highlight a couple of prides, points of pride, I should say. Our performance index has really been on a very nice upward trajectory. Our performance index, coming out of COVID, for a lot of reasons, you know, was not something we had been proud of. It's climbed from 68.6 in 2021 to 76.8 to last year. This year's score was 81.2. So that's an increase of actually 18% in terms of the points we've accomplished there, and we're proud of that. We've always put a lot of investment into the performance index as being the clearest measure of how our students are performing. When you get into some of those other components on the report card, they're increasingly complex, very confusing, even to the most educated among us, it's hard to really break that down. But in terms of simplicity, the performance index essentially says, how many kids are passing the test, and how are they doing specifically on the test? And the state has a formula, and again, you get different points for different scores, even if you're basic, it's one point, and not one point, but a certain amount of points. Limited is another point. Advanced plus is another point. So all of those scores come into one number. And so the performance index has always been the easiest to explain, and we're very proud of the fact that our increase has been all the way from 68.6 all the way to 81.2, just in two years. We also had several very high rankings on our state report card, five stars, which the state itself defines as exceeding state expectations. In gap closing, gap closing takes a look at subgroups, and are different subgroups making gains that we hope that they will make. So five stars is excellent. Four stars in progress, meaning, you know, are students making really essentially adequate progress from one point, you know, in the fifth grade to that same point in the sixth grade? Are they making enough progress? And so four stars, again, by state definition, exceeds state expectations. These are really points of pride. We had two schools that actually accomplished a five-star overall rating. Five stars is the most stars you can get. Our district had a three-and-a-half star rating. We did not have a star rating last year overall for our district, so we can't really compare that. The three-and-a-half stars out of five was our district score. We did have three stars in achievement. Now, I want to give that some context, because folks always like to look around and say, how does that compare? Berea was a three-star district as well in achievement. North Olmsted was a three-star district in achievement, and I believe Brooklyn was also. So right around the same, in terms of, you know, some comparable districts that the state says are comparable. Willoughby Eastlake had three stars in achievement. So that's, you know, right in the ballpark. Clearly, we want to, you know, increase all of these scores. One piece I also want to mention, that our overall score of three-and-a-half stars was .125 overall points away from four stars, which really does put us into a different echelon. So, you know, again, the state kind of takes all of these different computations, puts it into a cumulative number for all of us. We are at 3.0. 3.125 actually gets us to four stars. And so we know that, you know, that's clearly the goal. Last year, we used the mantra, you know, tightening the screws. And tightening the screws really meant, let's look at specific kids, let's look at specific subjects, specific data points during the school year, and say, how can we continue to move that? And I think when you look at that performance index, you can see some success there. We also had a good number of schools achieve five stars in one component or another. Densler had five stars in progress in gap closing. Hillside had five stars in progress in gap closing. John Muir, progress in gap closing. Karma Park, gap closing. Pleasant Valley, gap closing. And Renwood had gap closing. And Renwood, I'm sorry, Ridgebrook had progress and gap closing. All of those were five-star rating, rated again by the state. Densler, Green Valley, and Hillside all had an achievement component of four stars. Again, another point of pride. And then, and again, we'll go into a lengthy presentation, but I would be very remiss if I didn't mention our career tech program. Career tech has always been one of our crown jewels of what we offer here in our Parma City Schools. They get their own report card. And not all districts have that, because most districts share, you know, their programs. And so you'll have a couple of programs here, a couple of programs in another district that's called a consortium. Or they actually send their students to someplace like Auburn, Career Institute, or Polaris. We have our own career tech programs here, which is a really great advantage, because our kids can stay right here and not have to worry about that travel across town to another, you know, district or another center far off-site. 1,904 of our secondary students participated in career tech programming. That is a very high number. So we're at about 4,500 or so secondary school students who would be eligible for career tech programming. 1,900 participated in some way. Out of five stars, our career tech programs had 4.5 stars. Then they looked at federal indicators. There's nine federal indicators of career tech programming. We achieved eight of those. So again, a phenomenal number. All of the component, and their components are a little bit different, they look at, you know, really career-oriented components, all of the component grades were at least four. However, in post-program outcomes, and I've always looked at that, that's the most important piece. So in other words, we have to track kids. When they graduate, we look at how they're doing and what they're doing six months out. And if they are in the military, if they're in a post-secondary learning institute, if they're in some type of apprenticeship, well, that obviously helps that grade. We have five stars. So that means our students that are participating in those programs are coming out, not just in the, ah, what am I going to do? I'm going to, you know, kind of work at this hourly job for, you know, six months or a year and figure it out. They're in very clear pathways to successful middle-class to upper-class careers. And so we're very proud of that. I need to make sure that we thank Kristin Plageman, who may or may not be watching, I hope she is. Kristin works tirelessly, and she's led our career tech programming as long as I've been here, and does just a phenomenal job. I'd also like to thank Deb Vanek, who handles all the data. We are nothing until it comes from EMIS, which is our reporting system, to the state. And that is the most time-consuming, just very, very intricate process, to make sure that you are checking all the right boxes, and all the numbers going to the right place, and all the kids that we should have counted for us count, and the kids who shouldn't should come from another school district. You've got to make sure we're, you know, putting them where they're supposed to be. Very intricate process. We're nothing without accurate data of the state, and Deb Vanek handles all of that. So I want to make sure I thank specifically both of them for their efforts. So again, to our board, we will have more details forthcoming. We'll talk about our weaknesses as well. I don't want to hide from that. That's in the letter as well. We have two stars in graduation rate, two stars in early literacy, clearly not acceptable, clearly below our standards. We will talk about, at our next meeting, plans to improve upon both of those. But a lot of highlights from our state report card, and I appreciate the forum to present that.
Absolutely. That is stellar, the five stars in those things, especially gap closing. Did you explain what gap closing was?
Again, it's subgroup. So are you moving individual subgroups and taking them and saying, okay, so if your students with disabilities are achieving at a certain rate, you have a goal each year for your students with disabilities, closing that gap essentially between where their rating was, and essentially 100% or what your highest groups are performing at. You've got to make sure you're measuring those students. You have EL students, you have African-American students, you have socioeconomic demographic students. All of those subgroups have to make certain progress. And so for us to get five, that means we're taking students, whoever they are and whatever they come to us with, and we're advancing their learning. They may not yet pass the state test, and so that impacts that achievement piece, but the progress component and the gap closing mean we're catching them up, which is great.
That's awesome.
Finally, though, you know, I have to, I'm sorry, I know I said it was done. And I know I thanked...
Well, it's an exciting thing.
I know I thanked two very high-level administrators, but, you know, this doesn't happen without teachers that are coming to school every day and making sure that they're getting after it with our kids. We've often said, you know, those three simple rules that my mom taught me, one of them's work really hard every day. We cannot afford to take days off. We can't have movie days, we can't have check the binder days, we can't have makeup work days. Our teachers have to get after it every day, and that's what reflects in this data. So I am very appreciative to all of our teachers and absolutely for all of their efforts. Thank you. I really am done now, I promise.
All right. I should be very proud, sir. Very, very proud. We are also very proud of our teachers, and we'll talk about it more at the next meeting. So that moves us to communications, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Ron. As you might imagine, it's been very busy the last few weeks as we've approached the opening of school and as we have opened school. A couple of things that happened before our students came back. On August 29th, we had our new teacher breakfast, which is hosted by the Parma Area Chamber of Commerce at Tri-C, and we thank both of them for their efforts in recognizing and welcoming all of our new teachers and administrators. And it's a fun event and a nice way to welcome them to the district and get them started. And also, on opening day, we had our convocation for our staff at Byers Field. That was on September 1st. And I'm so pleased he's here this evening. Our state representative, Sean Brennan, was our keynote speaker that day. And his very moving and emotional presentation to all of the staff, I had somebody else, again, tell me they were in tears when they heard that message. You could hear a pin drop in Byers Field. People were just on the edge of their seat, listening to the story and the impressive remarks that Representative Brennan gave to us. And I thank you for that, and it's very much appreciated. And to go along with that, we had several... We had several students that served as kind of the MCs of the program and did a lot of introductions. And I don't mean to not recognize every one of them, but there was a fellow, a young man from Normandy High School by the name of Lyndon, and he came up and he spoke. But before he did his introductions, he talked about the story that you all know, it takes a village to raise a child. And he thanked the entire staff for being his village. And if that doesn't give you chills, and bring it out how important schools are in the lives of children, it was remarkable. He got a standing ovation for that, that moment. And so the two things together were pretty moving. So thank you again, State Representative Brennan, and we appreciate that. So then the start of school, well, was two days late. Mother, Mother Nature wanted to extend summer vacation, and so we did. But we're now back in the classroom, things are going, and, you know, we've had a lot of changes, as you all know, in the district this year. It's been quite a, quite a lot to accomplish. And once again, we will thank our maintenance and custodial crews and all the people that have been involved in the process. And Dr. Schneider headed most of that in moving everybody where they had to be and getting everybody settled. And so we thank the administration for their efforts. And we still get a couple of growing pains, or un-growing pains, would you call it, as we're consolidating, that we're working through and should be accomplished soon, I'm sure. But kids are going to class, they're learning, and a lot of, you know, the anxiety of making those changes really has not been a problem. So we appreciate everybody's efforts in doing that.
Very good. For this evening. Yeah, nevermind. Could be morning. So I took it, the effort to go, I went to Normandy on Friday, and I went to Valley Forge yesterday. And I walked the halls, I talked to teachers, I talked to students, I talked to administration in both buildings, and I also witnessed class changes. I wanted to be there for a class change. I wanted to see what was happening. Is it crowded, crowded? Or is it crowded like it was when I first started teaching? And it turned out to be, it was crowded like when I first started to teach in the Parma system, which was crowded, but not horrible. We were, kids weren't moving and having to shuffle through school. It was, but they had room to move, but it was excellent to see. Kids all said, yeah, this is great, we adjusted, it's fine, everything's good. And I told you before, the kids are resilient, they're always going to make that adjustment. The staff, you know, several of them came to me and popped in the rooms and said, hey, how's it going? This is the best room I've ever had! And I was like, it's great, we're good, I'm glad, we're excited. So they also, you know, do that enthusiasm in their classroom, teaching. So, so it was. And I was half-thinking, I'm going to talk to administrators, we had a lot of fights, we had this going on, this going on. Not a thing, not a peep. Everybody's kosher, or what do you want to say, it's cool, everything's good. The, I went to a lunchtime, I went to a lunch period, and that was, they said, this is our biggest one. And I'm looking at it, and I go, the one that I attended for duty, lunch duty, was like twice as big. So, I mean, they've got it figured out. So it was good. It was a very positive trip and visits to see that. I wanted to share that with you folks. Okay? So, do you have anything else in the communication?
Not for me.
Next meeting, we talked about Capitol Conference. I had a date on, I can't attend, so we need to choose. I have already stopped doing that weekend. I didn't know it was the weekend of the Ohio State, Michigan State game. I have stuff to do that weekend, so we need to choose another.
Somebody asking us to do...
They asked me to have Angela. I'm not making her to do that.
Angela will be the alternate, because I have not, you know.
Maybe I should back off.
I know, you're stuck there.
Okay, all right.
I'm sure you're upset. Treasure?
I do have you.
Good. At this point, we hopefully need for the public to address the board on tonight's agenda items. Do we have any requests? We have two. Cut. We have two. So, I'm going to read this little spiel first. So, the request forms were completed and submitted, which I have in my hand here. All statements must be directed to the board president. As per policy 0169.1, comments that are repetitive, obscene, disparaging, abusive, irrelevant, and/or comments that constitute a threat will not be tolerated, and the speaker will be asked to stop speaking and/or leave the building. Please note that the various board policies exist, that there are set forth processes and procedures to be used in investigating and addressing personnel issues that cannot be addressed in public. As per board policy, I'm sorry, excuse me, as per board policies, we may not be able to respond directly or address some issues at this time. If information is not readily available, we will respond in our next regular meeting. You have three minutes, you've been allowed for your speaker. And please remember to state your name and address for the record. And our first one is Chelsea Jewell. address for the record. And our first one is Chelsea Jewell.
Hello. I'm Chelsea Jewell. I live at 2801 Marion Cliff Drive, Parma. I'd like to speak about the revised weapons policy that's going to be read. I appreciate the effort the school board has made to address concerns about their decision to allow staff to be armed and to craft careful and responsible policy around the decision that was shared with us recently. Many people I know were relieved when told that the district was only going to arm security staff and not teachers, as we had originally thought. However, I personally still have a lot of issues with this that I wanted to share. First of all, we don't know arming staff works. We, when the board originally voted to arm staff, this was deemed an unfortunate necessity. However, I have not been able to find any clear evidence that arming security staff has real tangible benefits, let alone is necessary for student safety. Here, I am assuming that this is all about school shootings, because I've never been, no one's ever shared why else it would be deemed necessary for security staff to have weapons. A 2021 analysis of 133 school shootings saw no reduction in the rates of injuries at schools where armed guards were present, and in fact, a slightly higher mortality rate was observed. I also found reports that unarmed people have intervened successfully in active shooter events more frequently than armed individuals. I also know that I have heard that many shooters are unwell, suicidal, and being gunned down may be part of their plan. Therefore, I'm unconvinced that having armed staff is a deterrent against people who intend to inflict real harm. I also feel that army staff has many costs. There's the resources, time, money, et cetera, spent on training security staff in the use of a deadly weapon, or verifying that they are allowed to have it. The opportunity cost of doing this more than focusing on other strategies of violence prevention, mental health care intervention, and other security measures that have been proven to work. I'm worried about the effect on students. Many security guards will never witness an active shooter event or never need to use a gun. However, any student at a school with armed guards may feel the effects of that every day. The presence of armed security staff has been shown to negatively affect the experience of students at those schools in a variety of ways, eroding trust, worsening existing inequities, being correlated with harsher punishments or more frequent suspensions. These are not helpful for student success and comfort at school. Finally, I personally worry about a mental, emotional cost. To be able to act effectively, an armed security staff member would need to be ready to raise a gun to a child, possibly one that they know, because many school shooters are current or former students of that school. And I worry that the training that they're going to get would not prepare for them that, them for that. And I worry that if somebody was somehow prepared to do that, I don't know if I'm comfortable with my school, my student, my child being a student in that environment where someone's worrying about the dangers children pose rather than protecting children. I really appreciate your time. I know that things are already in motion here, and you're going to do whatever you think is best. Thank you for hearing my thoughts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next person, our Quentin Lawman.
Hello again.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Lawman. Good to see you.
Hi. I've read many of the same studies Chelsea did. Oh, Mike, Quentin Lawman, 6487 Westminster Drive. So I won't repeat a lot of the same statistics I found. I too was unable to find any data which correlates to improved safety in schools, arming staff. I found zero. Every study done, in fact, showed an equitable difference. It was either slightly better or slightly worse, depending on which statistic you're looking at, whether that's mortality rates or injuries. So again, I won't go over that ad nauseam. I do appreciate the revised document. I read it. I still have several concerns. We do move forward with this. I think things that are, I think there are things not codified that need to be. As I mentioned last time, the state requirements around arming staff in schools is laughably bad. I mean, it's pathetic. The, we need to, if we're going to arm staff in the schools, which again, I'm not on board with yet, it needs to be codified what that training requirement is. It can't just be 24 hours at gun range. It can't be, I want to know what the programs are. I want to know what the psych analysis is. The psych analysis is, I think annual psych evaluations is too few. Sorry, I'm rambling a bit. But those kinds of things, I think, need to be codified. If they're not in the, if they're not in the official rules, then we can't have confidence that those requirements are being met. If we're going to do this, we got to do it right. It's got to be specific, and it's got to be exhaustive in detail. Again, I can't find any evidence to suggest this is a good idea. I believe, like I said last time, everybody's hearts are in the right place. We all just want to protect our kids, myself included. But you talked a lot about data-driven decisions making our school better. The report card that came out, I just looked at it before I came here, it was awesome. Super impressed. You guys did a great job, the schools and teachers, awesome. But those were data-driven decisions. And I want to know where the data is driving this one. It can't just be one police chief. It can't just be one law enforcement official that thinks it's a good idea. I want data. I want national data. I want international data. I want to know that we've exhausted that avenue to ensure that this is the right decision. Because as Chelsea pointed out, this is expensive. This is my last point. Something that isn't clear to me is where is this money coming from? What could we use it for? Could it be better used to make our students feel comfortable? Get them in psychological treatment, things like that are effective in deterring these things. The weapons, there's, like, all that training is expensive. What's that doing to our liability? You have a point, but I'm running out of time. What's that doing to our liability is our insurance cost going to go up. There seems to be a large cost associated with this program that is still completely unclear to me. And I'm out of time, so.
Thank you, Mr. Lawman.
I appreciate you, again, letting me speak again.
We got it.
Thank you.
Can I comment?
Yeah, absolutely.
First, thank you both. Ms. Jewell, I know we exchanged quite a few emails, and I really appreciate the nature at which you came at this issue. And it's always been constructive and research-based, and I really appreciate that. I think, I took three questions from you that I think we can continue to work to be very transparent with, and that was cost, training, and mental health checks. I think that we actually, you know, the policy is the first part, and that actually is enough legally, but then we also have administrative guidelines that we will form, and we will continue to avail those to people. One hard lesson we learned, but clear lesson we learned, was, you know, the need to be as transparent as possible. And there are going to be a lot of, you know, differing opinions, but we can share all of these things. And I think it's very fair, because I think this is a hugely critical issue. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd just like to say one thing. Oh, sorry.
Do you like to say something?
Yeah, that's why I said I would like to say something.
Don't be a-
As far as the data goes, and I know that, you know, like, there's data out there that says, like, the school shootings, that didn't happen, right? So it's kind of impossible to know what school shootings have been started by having our, what we do know is that these shootings happen at where? Churches, schools, which are what? Free zones. So that is a pretty solid, consistent, consistent fact. And I don't know that there could be data that shows how many, you know, how many schools were passed up because they know that there are, you know, there is security out of the scene. So that's just, that's my thought to that part of it.
But the general consensus, or the insecure sentiment, that it's not-
I appreciate it, you.
Sorry.
Thank you. I appreciate you. I really do. Come on, to be honest.
No, no, and I'm trying not to speak bad, but I just-
No, I got you. All right. So anything else? Mark, do you have something?
No.
Then, no, okay. All right. So let's move on then. So thank you. I just wanted to add your comments. Ms. Jewell, so long, and I appreciate you having the opportunity to speak. So do we have any amendments? I do not. I do not. So I move to adopt Resolution 2023-09-395, approval of the written record of proceedings from August 24, regular Board of Education meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-09-395. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, roll call, Ms. Nusio. Mr. Vaughn? Yes. Mrs. Bratsch?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Short?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-09-395 has been approved. This brings us to Curriculum. Mrs. Bratsch.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-09-396, approval of memorandum of understanding between College Now, Greater Cleveland Explorer Program, and the Parma City School District. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-09-396. Any questions or comments from the boards?
I just, this, we really had a lot of fanfare behind this last year. This is a phenomenal opportunity for our kids. These are grants. This is from College Now. And each, there's six different sessions, 15 days each, on career and college exploration on specific pathways, which is an amazing opportunity. I mean, we really immerse these kids in these experiences. Last year, we had 173 students participate in this program, which I just think is really a source of pride and the exposure trip. So, you know, they go through these classes, and then they take trips to colleges, and they, you know, get to see some of what they've studied, you know, in person. Chicago, Louisville, Charlottesville, Richmond, and New York City were all trips that we took last year. And again, that's all grant-funded, which I just think is amazing. So I wanted to make sure we had those statistics, because that's quite a few students who took advantage, and we're very proud of this offering.
Let's get started. We got, no, roll call.
Hi.
Did you get something? It's not roll call.
I just, I just want to dittle that. I mean, that was a phenomenally new thing that came through for us last year. I wish I had the names of all the courses, I guess, that were available to kids. They were incredible, what was offered to our students. And in the first year, I'm thrilled that 173 took advantage of it. I see that only growing as we do it again this year, because they'll have heard from others how wonderful the programming was. But to have that experience, and it's no cost to the kids, grant-funded, no cost to the district, it was wonderful. So I'm thrilled that we're able to continue it.
Excellent. Thank you. Roll call, please. Mrs. Bratsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Short?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, Resolution 2023-09-396 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-09-397, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with a family during the 2023-2024 school year. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-09-397. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nusio. Mrs. Bratsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Short?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, Resolution 2023-09-397 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-09-398, approval of Parma City School District First Step Preschool Family Handbook for 2023-2024. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-09-398. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nusio. Mrs. Bratsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Short?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, Resolution 2023-09-398 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-09-399, approval of overnight out-of-state field trip. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-09-399. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nusio. Mrs. Bratsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Short?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, Resolution 2023-09-399 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-09-400, approving renewal agreement for web hosting services. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-09-400. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nusio. Mrs. Bratsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Short?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, Resolution 2023-09-400 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-09-401, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with potential therapy during the 2023-2024 school year. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-09-401. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nusio. Mrs. Bratsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Short?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, Resolution 2023-09-401 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-09-402, approval to enter into a contract between the Career and Technical Education Job Training Experiential Learning Program of the Parma City School District and Danny Boyes. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-09-402. Any questions or comments from the board?
Do you want to know what they're going to do?
Clean menus.
Cleaning menus, setting up chairs, cleaning chairs and tables, filling ice machine, and rolling silverware. So thank you to Danny Boyes for availing those experiences to our job workforce development students.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Mrs. Bratsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Short?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, Resolution 2023-09-402 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this will conclude curriculum for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Bratsch. This brings us to business. Mr. Ruda?
Yes, I move to adopt following Resolution 2023-09-403, approving agreement for S-P-A-C Food Service Sanitation and Safety Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-09-403. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nusio. Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Short?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, Resolution 2023-09-403 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-09-404, declaring select pupil in practical transport for 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-09-404. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nusio. Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Short?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, Resolution 2023-09-404 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-09-405, authorizing purchase of cameras for safety and security.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-09-405. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nusio. Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Short?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, 2000, I'm sorry, Resolution 2023-09-405 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-09-406, approval of determined safety zones.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-09-406. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nusio. Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Short?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, Resolution 2023-09-406 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-09-407, authorizing to continue to provide transportation for the First Step students with disabilities.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-09-407. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nusio. Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Bratsch?
Yes.
Mrs. Short?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, Resolution 2023-09-407 has been approved.
All right, unless another board member has something to discuss, this will conclude business.
Thank you, Mr. Ruda.
You're welcome, Mr. Vaughn.
This brings us to Finance. Mrs. Bratsch.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I move for the adoption of Resolution 2023-09-408, approval of the August 2023 financial report.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-09-408. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nusio. Mrs. Bratsch?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Short?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, Resolution 2023-09-408 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-09-409, ratification of investments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-09-409. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, Ms. Nusio. Mrs. Bratsch?
Yes.
Mr. Ruda?
Yes.
Mrs. Short?
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn? Yes, Resolution 2023-09-409 has been approved.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-09-410, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2023-09-410. Any questions or comments from the board? Seeing-
Oh, I was waiting on that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I forgot about that one.
$680,000. That's for auxiliary services, which is funding for, state funding for local schools. We have to- We have to handle all the, follow all our rules, because we're the district, school districts, they're close to us unless they act out and learn to themselves, which they have to do every two years. So we get funded, they have to do a purchase order, they have to follow our guidelines with the financial report. So there is state funding for local schools, but they could not, but there is. A lot of times, they have to be used for instructional purposes. So they, they use it a lot of times for internet, or textbooks, or classroom materials, and that's what, that money doesn't go to Commerce City School students, those people who live in the district but attend local schools.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2023-09-410 has been approved.
Unless another Board member has anything to discuss, this will conclude financing.
Thank you, Mrs. Brats. Unfortunately, right back at you, Mrs. Brats for legislation.
The only thing I will mention regarding legislation is a reminder that we do have renewal levy on the ballot in November. It's the combination of two of our renewal levies that will be coming due in the next, one in 2024 and one in 2027. So we're trying to combine them for less ballot fatigue, so that we're not coming back as frequently, and want to make sure everyone understands that this is a no tax increase ask. It's a renewal, just like any other renewal, we're just putting two of them together. And while they are called emergency levies, they are a part of critical funding of a school district. They become regular funding that we're heavily dependent upon. And so please understand and share with anyone that you can, it's a no tax increase issue. And that's it.
I had a question one time about that. A gentleman asked me, why do they keep calling emergency levies? You know, even though it's being renewed. It's because that was the language that was originally used, was emergency levy, and that language sticks with that duration, just so you guys know.
Emergency levies are fixed dollar amount levies. I mean, that's just the highway code, it's called emergency levies. The fixed dollar levies.
Which means even though these were originally passed many years ago, sometimes decades ago, we get no inflationary increase from that money. It is a fixed dollar amount that when it was passed, you know, if it was $100 when it was passed, 20 years ago, it's $100 now. And certainly, all of our costs have gone up since that time, so it's an important thing to, to money. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Charles. This brings us to human resources. Mr. Short.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I would, I move to adopt resolution 2023-09-411, approval of the following certificated exhibits: confirmation of certificated appointments, confirmation of certificated replacements, confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of supplemental appointments, confirmation of supplemental contracts, approval of certificated non-compensativities of absence, and confirmation of substitute teacher appointments.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-09-411. Any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2023-09-411 has been approved.
Move to adopt resolution 2023-09-412, acceptance of certificated retirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-09-412. Any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2023-09-412 has been approved.
Move to adopt resolution 2023-09-413, approval of Commerce City Schools bus duty substitute appointment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-09-413. Any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution, sorry, 2023-09-413 has been approved.
Move to adopt resolution 2023-09-414, approval of the following classified exhibits: confirmation of classified appointments and replacements, confirmation of change of classified assignments, confirmation of classified resignations, approval of classified non-compensativities of absence, and approval of classified stipend.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-09-414. Any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2023-09-414 has been approved.
Move to adopt resolution 2023-09-415, acceptance of classified retirements.
Second.
There you go. Second, sorry, motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-09-415. Any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none, Mr. Nusio.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Mrs. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes, resolution 2023-09-415 has been approved.
Unless another Board member has anything to discuss, this concludes human resources.
Thank you, Mrs. Short. Right back at you, policies.
I'm writing, Mr. Vaughn. The following are, well, our first readings of the following revised policies: policy 1617, weapons, policy 3217, weapons, policy 4217, weapons, policy 5310, health services, policy 6325, procurement, federal grants/funds, policy 8400, school safety, policy 8462, student abuse and neglect. And then I have a first reading of the following new policy: policy 5330.02, procurement and use of epinephrine auto-injectors in emergency situations, and policy 7217, weapons.
Thank you.
Unless another Board member has anything to discuss, this will conclude policies.
Can we just explain real quick? So first reading is there's no vote, it just, it moves forward then. If there's no questions about the first reading, it moves for a vote, and the next meeting will be September 28th.
Thank you. Any addition, any information from classified Board members? At this point, we're opening a meeting to public to address the Board with common center concerns. Do we have any such requests? If not, all right. We'll need executive session. So before I read this next thing, and before we adjourn for the evening, I just really want to reiterate how our three communities that make up the Commerce City School District need to unite and become a community, not three different communities, but become a community, and focus on the real issue, which is educating our students. I firmly believe that the natural turmoil that is present right now, that we as a Board cannot permit it to trickle down to us as a school. Let's maintain our focus on the children of our three communities, continue to be fiscally responsible and transparent. We cannot continue to follow this passive divisiveness. And I'll leave you from a quote from Abraham Lincoln's 1858 Senate Speech, which fits this current situation. "A house divided against itself cannot stand." "A house divided against itself cannot stand." Think about that. I want the people out there to think about that. I want the people out here to think about it, including us here. So with that, with that, I move to adopt resolution 2023-09-417 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2023-09-417. Roll call, please, Mr. Nusio.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Brats.
Yes.
Mr. Ruda.
Yes.
Mrs. Short.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for attending.